Great. Good. Thank you very well. Yourself?
Not bad. Can't complain. Nobody will listen anyways.
I would listen.
I might. I would. I would listen.
That's all I would do, though. I'd just listen.
Yeah. Tell the bell tolls 6:30. Mr. Clark, are we ready?
Uh, 6:30 it is, Mr. Chairman. Whenever you're ready.
Do we have everyone?
Um, I see George is here. Dan is here. Mark?
Yes, yeah.
And, uh, Robert's here as well.
Robert? Oh, great.
Yeah.
All right. Perfect. Welcome, everyone. Good to hear or see you again. So let's get moving here. Welcome to the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for Public Hearing on April 26, 2021. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the meeting is not occurring in person, and we have provided four options to main public access. Uh, we can be brought in by Zoom on smartphone, tablet, or computer. There is a call-in, um, ID number, as well as being able to watch and follow through on LTC Channel 99, as well as look at all the reviewable documents placed online by our outstanding DPD department. We'll move right into the meeting under Continued Business. ZVA 2021-5 for variance. The Poly Companies, 330 Jackson Street, Section 5.1. Poly Companies LLC seeking variance approval to construct an eight-story, 548-space parking structure at 330 Jackson Street. The property is in the Hamilton Canal Interstation District. The files will require variance relief from Section 10.3.8, Section 3. Building form standards for parcel one and any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. We are in receipt of a notice for withdrawal without prejudice. Is there a member for the petitioner present? None being heard. We will place into the record the email notice for continuance without prejudice and any comments or concerns by the board. None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clark?
Through Mr. Chairman on ZB 2021-5 at 330 Jackson Street, uh, Hamilton Canal District, parcel one. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that the petition be withdrawn without prejudice.
May I have a second?
I'll give you a second to the motion.
Thank you, sir. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perry?
I accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Vice Chairman Beck?
Uh, accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy?
Accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Brier?
Accept withdrawal.
Member Proco?
Accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Neroli?
Accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
So the board has accepted the withdrawal without prejudice. We'll move forward under Continued Business. ZB 2020-1, variance. Lorenzo Arpini, 7476 Chapel Street, Section 6.1. Lorenzo Arpini has applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking variance approval to convert a three-family home into a four-family home. The property is located in the urban multifamily UMF zoning district. The existing home at 7476 Chapel Street requires variance under Section 6.1 for off-street parking requirements. A site plan review under Section 11.4 for the conversion of a residential structure with no more than three dwelling units and any other relief required under the zoning ordinance. Is the member for the petitioner here?
Yeah.
I see the engineer is here. Yep.
So a representative for the petitioner?
He is here.
Yes. So, uh, my name is Ian Ainsley. I'm an engineer writing Lorenzo Arpini, the petitioner. Um, I don't know if I can kind of pull the plans up on here or if you do that from your end.
Um, you should be able to screen share. Also Dylan.
Every town's different with this.
Yeah, Dylan is running this meeting, so any technical or administrative questions should be directed to Dylan.
My apologies, Dylan.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure. Can you see the? Can you see the point?
There we go.
Yep.
All right, we're all set there. All right, tell us a little bit about, uh, this, um, continuance for this variance.
Let me repeat again. Sure. So this is an existing three-unit dwelling. Um, the applicant wants to convert this to a four-unit dwelling. Um, I believe submitted four plans, um, along with it that show how the four units would be laid out inside. Um, when we had first applied, I think we had just done a basic plot plan. Um, we had not done this site plan with a lot of the requirements and the regs. Such as contours, um, building height, but it is the variance request, et cetera. Um, I have applied, we have supplied a plan now, um, that meet all of those kind of regulatory checkmarks, um, for what needs to be on the plan. Um, the variance that we're asking for really is for the parking. Um, right now, the cars just kind of cram in if you're looking at the plan on the east side. Um, right now, they just kind of filter into that existing pavement over there. Um, I tried to fit what I could over there, um, for the city off-site parking reg compliance spaces. I was able to fit two, but I was talking to, uh, Jessica today, uh, who informed me that when you have a four-unit or more plan, um, you need an aisle with to access that kind of inner space of 12 feet, and I had eight feet, which I guess is only for one to three units. So right now we have one space, and I believe the requirement is for eight spaces, um, four units times two each. So really what we're asking for really is a variance, um, of relief from eight spaces to one off-site parking space. Um, there's no construction work, um, externally proposed to be done here. It's all internal, um, floor plan stuff.
Okay, that's all you have for comments at this time?
Yes. Well, I will, I will say, uh, from a background point of view, um, the petitioner purchases property about a year ago, um, you know, expecting for three units, and I don't, I don't, I wasn't part of the negotiations between him and the seller. Um, but I wouldn't be surprised if he expected to get a fourth, and this is, this is kind of a pre-existing, um, shape and size of the property issue, um, if you're kind of looking at it from a soil-shaped topography type issue for hardship. Um, so this is kind of a pre-existing issue with the size of the property, um, as far as the parking goes. But, um, I guess, yeah, that's all I would have to say.
Oh, thank you very much. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? I'm not sure if that was unopposing or in favor, but either way, the public hearing will now be closed. Like to open it up to the board for comment. Man?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think I just have a couple of, of, uh, comments, no real questions. Um, so it looks like the applicant is, is in need of eight, uh, spaces in this property. They have two. Uh, to me, I've been looking for six spaces on site. Um, you know, I, I think, I think this, this property is kind of at a mixed-use kind of, uh, area where there's multiple family units kind of in this neighborhood. So, you know, I, I don't see any strong objection from, from my end unless, um, anyone has any major concerns, but, uh, other than that, those are my comments. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Sean?
Uh, thank you through, Mr. Chairman, um, to the applicant. Uh, I appreciate, uh, providing the information, uh, we had requested from the last, uh, meeting. Um, more especially the last, uh, the layout. There was no layout for the parking, uh, demonstrated on the site plan, which was something obviously that we concerned about because you're seeking a variance on parking.
Of course.
You are, and you, I mean, you are correct. I mean, based on the, this, the size and lot, shape of the lot, um, yeah, it's going to be kind of difficult to obviously obtain the parking, necessary parking back there. Uh, lucky you can even get the two spots, and now that we can see it, you're lucky you can even get the two spots in there, um, for that. Um, I do have some questions about, uh,
Well, I don't think I even have to, um.
Yeah, you, you could, you could, but yeah, without the stacked parking, you're right. It's like you couldn't, uh, you don't really, you don't really have it unless you got someone to stack it.
Yeah.
Correct on that. Um, I am concerned, I am confused, not concerned, I mean, I'm more, um, curious about the layout of the inside, the interior of the property and how, uh, how it's, how it's laid out, the, where the egresses are. Um, and to that, to that extent, and I think that might factor into some of the parking, some of the parking and part of possibly some conditions that might come on with regards to parking. So I'm going to the, uh, actually if you can pull it up on the, uh, the interior, if you're able, uh, Mr. Ainsley to pull up the interior.
Yeah, let's see if I can.
What I'm, what I'm trying to figure out. This makes it a lot easier if you can bring it up.
Hang on. Yeah, hang on a second. I'll just try to. What do I do with that one? Sorry, computers being a little, little slow.
Um, I guess if we could start at level one, I think that'll probably be easiest to start at level one. Get there.
All right, let me see what level this is. It's level two. Okay, that's level one. Can you see that?
Okay, yep, I can see that. All right, so I'm just trying to get a configuration, looking at the building. I'm guessing Chapel Street is actually laying on the top of this, uh, of this plan, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So that would be the entrance going in from Chapel Street. So now how is the, can you walk me through the layout on this and how, like where they, which, which are individual units, um, how they're possibly laid out and that? I'm presuming, I was trying to follow it a little bit, and I think I can, I think I can follow it, but I just want to make sure we're clear on it.
Sure. Um, looks like where you come in, right here, you have a hallway.
Yep.
You come down kind of on the left side, you get the dining living room here, kitchen. Um, yeah, I think this is all kind of one unit on the left. Yep. Um, then you kind of have one unit on the right, um, kitchen, bedroom, bathroom, et cetera.
Okay.
Um.
Then I don't see any bedrooms. I see one or two bedrooms.
Let me see if I can go up to the second floor. Yeah, I see the two bedrooms here. This is, you know, I'm kind of doing more the exterior stuff, so I'm kind of looking at it with you right now, to be honest with you.
So I, that would be, excuse me, so.
But yes.
Those bedrooms, there would be an extension, the top floor of unit one. Let's call the left, let's, from Chapel Street, we'll call the right, the right side.
Yes, I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess these. Yeah, I'm going to guess this, this left side over here on level two is part of that, uh, left side on the first level.
Okay. Um, and this looks like, so on this, the second floor, the second, third unit, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah, this is probably a third self-contained unit right here, got laundry, bedroom, kitchen, bedroom, et cetera.
Egress, so the egress to that would, would be on the outside, the, the exterior?
Yeah, the stairs coming up here. Looks like there's a door right here.
Okay. And then if we go to the third, uh, the third floor.
Alternatively, you could, oh, oh.
Oh, yeah, alternatively, you see.
Yeah, alternatively, you could probably come up the stairs too. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, but let me grab the third floor. So now you're on the third floor, which again, you'd probably be entering, uh, from the stairs, exterior stairs here.
Okay, yeah.
But, yep, bedroom, bathroom, living room, kitchen, dining room, another bedroom. So it looks like this whole top floor is one unit, as far as I can tell.
It's kind of, it isn't, it isn't, I mean, can you go back up a little bit again, or, yeah, uh, that other bedroom on the side, is that, looks like that's, that's from the stairways, it looks like that's cut off from the other wall, so it might go down to the first unit again. I don't know, it's kind of, kind of strange.
Hmm, yeah, I see what you're saying. Um, let me go back to the second floor. Yeah, see if
So.
Two bedrooms here, which would be part of the bottom one, and you have three bedrooms on this side, which would be part of that one.
Yeah.
Uh, so if you were to come up to the third, I guess there should be, what I'm thinking is correct, maybe there should be some sort of petition or some sort of opening here to connect these two.
And Mr. Arpini is not, not, uh, on the line with this, is he? I think he would probably explain.
I don't know. Are you here, Lorenzo? I know he was having some, um, potential medical issues, uh, with his family, so he wasn't sure if he'd be here or not.
Well, I mean, I think, uh, the, the reason I wanted to walk through it is try to get an idea where the egresses were, what leads to what unit.
Sure.
And I think for the purposes of that, my thinking is, um, should be grant relief, um, at least for the parking in the back and rear. Um, may want to dedicate those spaces to the two units that have the egress on the outside.
Yeah.
Leading to the back, um, because it just makes more, it would just make more sense, um, for that, if, if, if we do it that way.
Yeah, that makes sense. I, I, I think, um, I think the petitioner would be okay with that.
Okay. Other than that, I mean, I think, like I said, I mean, I appreciate providing this information. It may, it's very helpful, especially the layout of the units.
Sure. Yeah.
Go through this exercise just to find out. We don't, I mean, we want to see what we're dealing with on the, on the interior in this instance. Um, to see what we're dealing with as far as egresses are concerned.
Absolutely.
I, um, I, I, I do believe that, uh, it would, does meet the criteria for the, uh, for variance, especially the way the, the property is laid out, the, uh, circumstances of the, uh, site and what's, what's available. Uh, I guess it's been kind of a four unit, even though it's only been a three unit, then kind of a four unit house.
Yeah, I mean, the petitioner hasn't mentioned that to me, but I, I do think that is a pretty common scenario that seems to happen pretty often, so.
And, uh, I believe if I'm not mistaken, um, Dylan or Jess or Fran, uh, leaving all the grant the variance on the parking, they still have to go before the planning board provides, correct?
That's correct, and we have not seen that application come in yet.
Okay. Um, for the purposes of the variance, I, I think, uh, the criteria could be met on this, and I think we have to grant. I, I, I would approve of granting of this with the condition that the, uh, rear units are dedicated, with dedicated parking in the rear. The two spaces are, are dedicated to the units, uh, that are, that have the exterior egress coming, coming, have the exterior egress. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, but, um, just to be clear on how the building plans illustrate the structure that is in front of us. It's a three-family with three meters, and I think that's all the city has granted from a occupancy permit in the past. It's never been granted as a four-family, and as we know, if you tip it into the four-family category, there are a lot of other things that go with that, um, namely sprinkler. It would be required for this. So this is set up right now as a four-family from a city permitting side, occupancy, or a construction side. Um, however, the plans illustrate, unit one is a three-bedroom with access on three levels. Unit two, which exists on the first floor, is a two-bedroom. Unit three on the second floor is a three-bedroom with access from the stairway, um, on exterior stairway, which is not roofed over, it just has an open canopy. Um, and then unit four, if it were to be called a fourth unit, is on the third floor only as a two-bedroom. So we have two three-bedroom units on the plans and two, two-bedroom units with odd configurations. Um, I do believe the way the house may have been constructed as a three-unit is that it was up and down stairs on each side, um, first and second floor originally. And then the third floor is developed into a third unit, so you'd have townhouse-style units on the first and second floor with the comment, with the stair individual, and then the third floor. But in any event, very odd configuration, um, and also the narrative that was developed to support this um, states that there's a, under the application materials, um, that there is a current space with one bedroom, one bath, and one living room and a kitchen as part of apartment number two and upstairs from apartment number two. So that, that narrative is, I don't know what that really even means. It doesn't seem to correspond to the drawings. Um, that said, um, I also have a problem with the revised plot plan. Um, it was stated earlier in the application material, I think in the comments actually, that the site is actually 4,294 square feet. Um, this plot plan doesn't illustrate 4,294 square feet. So I think it's stated that the plot plan of the actual lot is, is half of, or goes into the center line of Cottage Street. So if this is representing the lot, why doesn't it show that center line of Cottage Street as uh, part of the property, or does it? I mean, I'm confused because I think that was part of the document before. It, even though it states 4,294 square feet, I don't think the math would get to 4,294 square feet without increasing that southerly border into the center of Cottage Street. Is that correct, Ian?
Well, yeah, let me just do, I mean, this isn't exactly, but let me just take a rough, as if this were a rectangle. Forty-six by, I call it seventy-five is probably the average in the middle. Um, yeah, you're looking at thirty-five hundred roughly, I would say. Um, we looked at the registry of deeds, um, any kind of record plan that we could find. I, I know that the property deed does state, um, that he owns essentially half of Cottage Street, but we could not find any plan, uh, recorded plan backup for that. Um, it's, it's our position, and I'm, I'm not a surveyor, but our surveyor that did stamp the plot plan that we submitted, um, his understanding is that he does not own half of, um, Chapel Street, so, or Cottage Street. So it's our opinion that he does not own that half of the street and that that, uh, square footage number should be corrected on this plan.
And it should say something closer to thirty-seven.
Reality, it's yeah, something thirty-five, thirty-seven hundred would be my rough estimate.
Okay, well, round it to thirty-six hundred square feet. Okay. So it, it would require a lot area variance for dwelling unit, I think, because I think we're requiring 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit to go to four. All right. Um, in viewing the site, um, I noticed that four vehicles are parked currently on that rear dirt area that isn't paved, that is shown as, uh, shaded as gray. It says existing gravel driveway, but I'm not sure what, how much gravel is really there, Ian. It seems like there's no gravel there, to tell you the truth.
Hmm, yeah.
Is it gravel? Because it doesn't, it, it's dirt right now. It's not gravel. Is that your intent?
Yeah, I mean, gravel is what, what if it's not a dedicated gravel driveway now, uh, yes, I, I think they would turn it into a gravel driveway, um, formally.
I, can I, can I, can I comment on that?
Survey that I was given, um.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yep.
Who, who, who's interrupting?
Uh, this is our Lorenzo here.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Uh, I'll, I'll just wait to make a comment on that.
Uh, we let Dennis finish up, um, and then we can bring you in for comments and answers, and then Sean, if you need to, um, come back, we'll go back to Sean. But, uh, thank you for attending, sir.
Yeah, sorry, I was just wanted to hospital here, that's why I'm.
Yeah, no, no worries. We certainly understand. We just want to make sure that, um, you know, public is aware that you're now here. Mr. McCarthy finishes his time, and I believe, um, Mr. Callahan may have a question for you, so we'll stay on that line, and we appreciate your attendance and hope all as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where I was going with the comment about the rear driveway, currently there is, um, accommodations of, it does actually accept four vehicles parked back there, which I witnessed. Um, so Ian, um, there's a nineteen-foot, two, nineteen-point-two-foot dimension from the corner of the building to the existing rear property line, or I guess, I guess we'd call it, uh, easterly property line, I guess, um, in any way. Is it possible to, I understand we wouldn't be meeting the criteria required by the zoning bylaws, but if we were to find a way of configuring four parking spaces back there, what would that actually look like? Because I see that as uh, really required, um, in order for even three units to be permissible here, because you don't have off-street parking for, I think, and, and knowing that the, the current tenants have four vehicles, that they use that back and to, to suddenly state that we're only going to put two back there. It just seems like a recipe for more parking on, uh, Chapel Street, which is already too dense, in my opinion. So Ian, can you weigh in on whether or not we can get some way of parking four vehicles back there, um, on a site plan and see what kind of, um, relief that would require?
Well, the release that would be needed, um, in the regulations, I believe you need three feet from a property line, uh, to a space, and you need three feet, um, from the building. from the building to a space, and in this zone, the UMF zone, you need nine by eighteen from a space dimension point of view. If you can shrink some of those requirements and possibly vary the stacked parking requirement as well, kind of combination of those, I don't know exactly, you know, how much on each one. But you, I, I think certainly four, you know, could be fit in this plan in, in kind of a reality point of view, maybe not a zoning point of view. But you've, you've seen four parked there right now, and there's probably some room left over. So I, I think it can be done physically, it just probably would need some more relief from the zoning regulation point of view.
If, if this were to need the interest in granting the variances required from my fellow board members, I would be in favor of a site plan that supports four parking spaces back there, whether they're eight feet wide by eighteen, or you know, even seven and a half feet wide, or something that makes sense to give us off-street parking at a maximum amount. And then, the Chapel Street side has a mention of fifty-four-point-two-six feet. So there's off-street parking on Chapel Street. If you were to call, in an ideal world, or some, some relief to get an off-street parking space down to eighteen feet long, that would be three spaces. So that would give you potential off-street parking and on-street parking of seven spaces, which gets us, I think, within shooting range of...
Pretty, pretty close.
Bedroom.
From what Lorenzo has told me, there's actually already a space, there's somebody, not a space, but there's somebody parking on the Chapel Street side already that kind of parks, if you're looking at the plan in the lower left-hand corner, already.
Yeah. I just don't want to see, and I know the other properties around there are probably maxed out with their requirements for parking. There's a number of units nearby that don't seem to have any off-street parking, you know, like, you know, six-unit structures. So the, the street parking is premium, I'm sure. And to grant relief to go from a three to a four without some avenue for how we're going to handle the parking, is kind of... But I mean, I guess I need to hear the rest of the story from my fellow board members. I'm not sure. Because this is a ten-bedroom house. A ten-bedroom house. That could be, you know, ten cars, you know? It's a lot of vehicles potentially. Hopefully, people are taking the train and walking, and it's in relatively, you know, reasonable distance to the train, or taking some other means, not using cars, but this is a ten-bedroom house, according to the plans right now, so. That, that would be where I stand, though, that I'd like to see a plot, a lot. I'd like, I'd like to see a plot plan that clearly understands exactly what the lot is, whether it's 4,294 square feet, as you're illustrating here with the number, but only showing something that's close to thirty-six hundred square feet. And how, solving that from a document standpoint, and then also solving avenue to get four parking spaces in the back there, and what relief would be required to do that. But I'd like to hear from my fellow board members if they feel this is something that should go forward, knowing that it's a ten-bedroom house. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Breyer speaking. I don't see how we can proceed with this without an approved parking plan. I'd like to see, make it a condition that we have a parking plan, whether it's utilizing the four spaces in the back and whatever whatever we may need to provide to achieve that. As Dennis said, ten bedrooms? Where's the parking? I really think it comes down to that. I don't, so my, my final comment is, I I'd like to approve this project, but without a parking plan that makes sense, I cannot vote in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo what fellow board, board members have noted here. It seems that the applicant should make an effort to show some, you know, allocate, show some parking plan on this, on this on this lot plan. So I, I, I echo what the other members have said here. And also, you know, I, I'm also concerned with the egress plan that Member Callahan other issues such as sprinkler and so on. So I think for a start, I think it would, it would be good if we got a parking plan, even before we consider anything. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also agree with the, the fellow board members, because, again, you can only think about if, in total, a ten-bedroom, you know, building in, in an area that is already very condensed, and, and just driving up and down the street, I mean, it's, it's almost one car at a time. So you would figure if you do have, like you said, a ten-bedroom construction, and there's ten cars, I, I think it would make sense to see what easement you can do for that property with looking at parking on Cottage Street. I mean, even I myself, just driving in the area, looking at the house, it, it, it was very challenging. I mean, just making turns and so forth. So anything you can do to, to ease the tenants that would be there, I, I think would be helpful. I mean, it is a project that, you know, you know, I would like to approve. I mean, especially with the city needing housing. I mean, it, it would make sense. But let's try to be within the confines of, of what the property is dictating. If, if you're having a bigger space, you, you want to provide, you know, something for your tenants that, you know, that, that would ease the traffic flow in that neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George. Sean, could you, um, would you like to reconvene? I know you may have had a question for the petitioner and director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Mr. Rappini is back on the line. I think we'll clarify, some more clarification a little bit about the interior of the of the house and how the, how the units are laid out. I'd like to try to find out, because I've, I've, I've just, I counted these several times now. I don't, I know it's ten or nine, but I've seen nine beds, nine beds, not ten. But I think, Mr. Rappini, maybe you weren't there previously, too, when I asked Mr. Ainsley, the layout of the interior, and how, if you can walk us through it a little bit. I think, Ian, you're on, are you on number one, level one?
Yes, yep. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Rappini, can you, I'm just trying to clarify how these units are laid out. So starting from the top, we have Cottage Street, where the front entry is. How is this, how are these, how are these two units on this side laid out? Mr. Rappini here?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Is that you, Lorenzo?
Yeah, sorry, I had it muted. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, so, um, let's start off this way. I, the way I see it, it's nine beds, right? However, the way I bought it, you know, when I, when I was buying, I saw ten bedrooms. So I say ten bedrooms is because I presume that link, it's ten beds. However, obviously, nine, so upstairs, which, which is is one on living room, one bedroom. That, that's how I, so I see it as well. However, when, you know, when it's, when it was listed, it was listed as a ten-bedroom house. That's why, ten-bedroom house.
Okay. I note the CIS property records have it listed as a nine-bedroom as well.
Okay, because the, the way I saw it listed was a ten-bedroom. That's why I call it a ten-bedroom. I thought the legal, legally, it would, it would be ten bedrooms. But, you know, I would actually be happy to make it a nine-bedroom, because it's such, it's a, it's a small unit, and, you know, I didn't want to make that unit a two-bedroom unit. I just wanted to be a one-bedroom unit, and that way there we would call the house, you know, a nine-bed.
Okay, so, so you're talking about the, the one on the top, the top, uh, level three. There's, there's like, there's a, there's, if we go to level three, we see there's a bedroom on the, let's start from the chapel, from the Chapel Street side. There's a bedroom on the right, then on the left is the unit with the dining room, kitchen, living room, bedroom on the back end.
Right, right.
Okay, so the unit, the bedroom on the right from Chapel Street, is that connected to the downstairs unit?
Let me, let me, so the bedroom on the right, so if I'm looking at the house, so the one on, like, on the Cottage Street side?
On the Cottage, on the Chapel, yeah, on the Cottage, on the corner of Cottage and Chapel.
No, that unit is one unit, has all three floors.
Yeah, that's a three, it's a three-floor, three-bedroom unit.
Correct.
Okay, that's, I think that's what we're trying to, what we're trying to walk through and try to get, get some clarification on. Because I, I'm not mistaken, Dennis, maybe correct me if I'm wrong. I thought you were thinking that that was a two-bedroom unit on the top floor. From the layout, it looks like it's actually a one bed, because we were talking about how there's a break-off where the stairs are, and how that's possibly not connected. So the top floor, one unit on the top floor, is only going to be one bedroom, and it has the egress on the outside, heading to the outside to the back. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and actually, it looks like it possibly has an egress going down to the front as well. Okay. All right. So the way I'm seeing it is this, on the left hand, you walk on from the Chapel Street side. On the left-hand side, you have the one unit that's three floors, three bedrooms. On the right-hand side, I mean, on the right, that's on the right-hand side, heading in from Chapel Street. On the left-hand side, you have a one-floor unit that's two bedrooms.
Yes.
You have a second-floor, three-bedroom unit on the right-hand side.
Yes.
With the, with the, with the left hand, on the, on the, on the left-hand side, with the right-hand side being the two beds for the, for the unit one, we'll call it unit one. And then, on the third floor, you have the one-bedroom unit, and then the third bedroom on, on the right-hand side, excuse me, left-hand side, and the third bedroom is on the right-hand side for unit one.
Wait a minute. A, a third bedroom on the top unit?
Yeah, that goes to unit one.
Yeah, that, that's, so let me, let me just, so I have unit one, so on the opposite side of Cottage Street, I have unit one, two bedrooms.
That's two bedrooms. Okay, we'll call that unit one.
Yeah, and then, unit two, I have three bedrooms. Okay, so the, the one up above, which is the one that I'm, you know, trying to make a legal apartment, right now, that one, the way I see it, has one bedroom.
Yeah.
One, uh, one, uh, living room along with the kitchen.
Yes.
Okay, now, what the, so what I'm trying to do, I, I am not, I know that I had mentioned about a ten-bedroom here, but I, like I just explained, I don't want it to be a ten-bedroom house. I'm hap, I'm actually, I would actually, that it's a nine-bedroom. I'm not trying to make another legal bedroom there. I'm just trying to legalize this unit as a one-bedroom unit.
Okay, that's, that, that clarifies it a bit. I think there might have been a little bit of confusion with regards to the number of bedrooms, and whether that top unit was actually a two-bedroom and not a one-bedroom. So that clarifies it. You have the one-bedroom unit, and then the bedroom that's on that top unit goes down, is, is connected to the, the bottom floor, unit two, I guess you called it, is the third bedroom for unit two, that goes all the way up.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that clarifies it for me. As far as the parking's concerned, I mean, try to fit four, that, you know, if we're able to do a parking plan that fits four cars back there, that would be helpful, certainly to get more cars off the thing, and, but I'd still probably want those, even if we can stack four cars back there, I still want the, a condition that they, they be dedicated to the units that have that outdoor egress that goes to the back. So that way, the people, the people on the front units, there's, there's no scrambling back and forth amongst people in the front units and the back units, to try to get them to move cars if necessary. But I will go with the... That's, that's pretty much what I have at this point. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean. Any other comments by any of the board members?
I, I just want to mention, to Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention that I was reading that front dining room on the third-floor unit as potential tenth-bedroom by error, but it certainly would be easily converted into another bedroom if a tenant so desired to have that tenth bedroom, in my opinion. Because it would certainly lend itself to that kind of condition. However, you know, I, I'd like to see a parking plan that understands exactly what kind of variances or relief you're looking for that would provide four spaces in the back, that would meet the requirements of the square footage, of whatever the square footage is, if you're identifying it as thirteen square feet or identifying it as forty-two ninety-four. Pick one and verify it, and make sure that you have it correct. And then, I'd like to see, in my opinion, a reduction in bedrooms, because I really think that the stress of the neighborhood for ten bedrooms, nine would be great. Eight would be even better, you know? I, I really see this as a, a lot of bedrooms in this house, and no parking to support it, you know? You could have a problem here with a lot of cars being added to the neighborhood, for sure. So just nervous about that. Maybe there's a middle ground here where you end up with relief for the parking, but you end up decreasing the quantity of bedrooms in, as, as a suggestion. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I have, I have a few comments and concerns as well. My first concern is it's an incomplete package without the parking plan. Therefore, it makes it difficult for me to finalize my opinion for a vote. Secondly, the parking is not resolved with nine from ten to nine. I, I think it, I agree with Mr. McCarthy. I think it's a lesser amount. I understand, you know, the, what the owner purchased, and what he's trying to do. Happy to hear it's not an intention of ten, however, not to be disingenuous to anyone, as Mr. McCarthy stated, once people are in, things can, things change internally that no one's aware of, and that becomes problematic for emergency services. I think if we have an identified parking plan outside of, people are already parking there and kind of taking over domain on their own, it, you know, it satisfies the need. But the overall concern is, at this point, don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are on our second or third continuance here. I mean, I kind of feel as though, second, okay, I kind of feel the board has established requirements, the ZBA, in conjunction with DPD for requirements for the application. And in order to keep the ordinance in public hearings where they should be, it's, the requirement is complete packaging, so. I am in, I, my only thought at this point, gentlemen, and I'll listen to my colleagues, is... I am in, I, my only thought at this point, gentlemen, and I'll listen to my colleagues, is, uh, one final continuance to May tenth with the parking plan set in place with some correspondence and thought on bedroom reduction. Uh, what, what the feasibility of that is, uh, from the owner, because certainly everything's a function of money and budgets, and I certainly understand that. But until we get that, uh, parking plan, I, I myself am not comfortable on, on making a parking plan a condition, uh, to move forward with variance because makes it, uh, not, in my opinion, appropriate, appropriate vote for a complete package. So, any other comments by the board? I, I did, did you have a wish? Go ahead, Mr. McCarthy, Sean.
I think just the last note is, um, verifying the four thousand two hundred ninety-four square feet on the block plan. If that should be changed, or, you know, someone's certifying this plan here, but they're showing something that doesn't, it's got needs and bounds on it, but it doesn't add up to four thousand two hundred ninety-four square feet, so correct the number, correct the plan, please.
All right, so, so, it, um, what you're hearing or what's being discussed is more discussion and communication and clarification on square footage, bedroom, and provide a parking plan. Um, I think there's plenty of time, in my opinion, I could be wrong, it's, it's your call, um, to continue to May tenth. If you think you need further, uh, further push out on, on the calendar, we could certainly look at, on the last meeting in May. But, um, just to be consistent with past practice and precedent of this board, we will not be, we have not in the past. We, we do not entertain more than three continuance, it gives plenty of time to, uh, get your ducks in a row. And, uh, you seem like you, 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 you know, you're doing all the right things here, you're kind of, seem like, you know. I, I appreciate the work you're doing and I understand the position you're in, um, and your relatives, your budgets and your needs for, for your investment here. And, and certainly, we, we want to work with you for the housing needs. But th- there's just too many things that aren't, you know, confirmed in next in stone, if, if you will, so, your comments, sir?
Um, no, um, I'm more, I just have a question. Um, so, if I, um, so what you guys are suggesting is that, um, you know, if people moved in and they decided to, um, you know, add, uh, uh, you know, add an additional ba, uh, bedroom there, therefore, what will be more cars and parking? Is there any restrictions that I could put in the house or in my lease contracts that I would not allow that to happen?
And so you can, you can certainly use a Massachusetts standard leasing and you could, you know, make this claim as a notice that there's no, uh, alterations or increase in, uh, bedroom quarters within the, within the property. I mean, I, I would certainly do that to cover yourself as a landlord, the city can't participate in that. And, and again, we're not being disingenuous, we just, I think it's more knowledge and experience of what takes place. And it's, and it's difficult as a landlord to, to control that. We, we, we certainly understand that. Um, yeah, but if you have a vehicle or an instrument within your lease that prohibits that, um, that has a little, that has more teeth for you, with, with, with your tenant. Um, the requirements that we're looking for, the Z B A, I think you can meet them, uh, with some thought process and some back and forth with, with our D P D in order to, in order to get to where you want to be, where I believe this board wants to help you, uh, to maintain this property and get additional, um, families, uh, housing within the city. I, I think it's, I think we're, you know, we can be there, we just have to check off all the boxes.
Awesome.
But I also believe, in my opinion, that, um, I believe, uh, feel free, my colleagues, to correct me. I think these are things you can work with D P D over the next couple of weeks to get resolved from May tenth, because we have to have that parking plan in hand.
Okay.
Any other, okay, any other concerns or comments by the board? None being heard? I'd like to seek a motion for continuance to May tenth with the requirement of a parking plan, uh, enumeration of bedrooms. And negotiation discussing how those bedrooms will be set. And also the square, confirmation on the square footage, uh, certified. Any other comments or concerns? None being heard, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on Z B twenty twenty-one dash one for seventy-four, seventy-six Chapel Street to continue the public hearing of this matter to May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
May I have a second?
Love.
Second by Mr. McCarthy, may I have a roll call?
Member Perrin?
Uh, approve continuance to May tenth.
By Mr. McCarthy?
Uh, approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Member McCarthy?
Approve third continuance to May tenth.
Member Brier?
Approve continuance.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance to May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
And member Narohe?
Approve continuance to May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so we've, you've been approved to May tenth. Uh, that said, it's the continuance. Please work with D P D, uh, over the course of this time to get, uh, all your paperwork and, and your application in order, in order to move forward with the vote on that, that subject evening. And we appreciate your time and we wish you the best. That being said, moving forward to Z B A twenty twenty, you're welcome, sir. Thank you for attending. Z B A twenty twenty-seven, special permit, seventy-eight, seventy-nine Lakeview Avenue, L L C, seventy-eight Lakeview Avenue, section six point three, seventy-eight, seventy-nine Lakeview Avenue, L L C, as applied to the zoning, zoning board of appeals, seeking special permit approval to erect an internal lumineous sign at seventy-eight, seventy-nine Lakeview Avenue. Property is located urban mixed-use U M U zoning district. The proposed applicant requires a special permit from zoning board of appeals under section six point three and any other relief required under, oh, zoning ordinance. Is there a petitioner here this evening?
Yes.
Good evening, sir.
Chuck Rares with Science Now, oh, sorry.
Well, pleased to see you tonight, sir. Can you just give us a quick background about your son?
Sure. Um, the, uh, the, uh, Department of Planning, Dylan Ricker and, and company did an excellent job. You all have, uh, his memo, a project summary with, uh, the exhibits of the sign and, uh, some of the, uh, observations and conclusions, uh, that they made. Uh, we are, in, in the comments, I'll just use his memo, uh, for discussion if you wanted to follow along there. Uh, in his comments, number one, the applicant seeking internally illuminated sign, as you said. And number two, uh, the signs shall not project more than fifteen inches and not exceed two square feet per linear foot of building face. And so, uh, the signs we're talking about, the design that you should see are what we would consider, uh, standard internally illuminated channel letters. So they are typically five or six inches deep, they might be shallower at three, but they would not exceed the fifteen. And then, uh, the, under number two, there are some notes about the faces, uh, on three different sides of the building. And there's some photographs, uh, uh, following, uh, in the, in the memo of those three sides of the building. And, um, it, uh, it has Domino's signs on some of those sides. And, uh, one of the notes says that, um, um, and, you know, they allowed a maximum amount of square footage, would be a hundred and seventy-one or a hundred and nineteen feet or a hundred and seventy-three feet. Uh, we are seeking, as you see on the drawing, seventy square feet facing on one wall. Um, we are not looking for a sign on V F W highway. Uh, we would like the opportunity at some point in the future to add a sign, uh, facing on the other side of, of the building, which is facing Lakeview, right around the corner from the opposed side. But, um, today we're real, we're after getting approval for the, the sign as you see it, uh, suggested there. Um, we do not have a, a design for the other side, uh, so, uh, under number three, we would just be asking for this one. Um, so we're looking for the seventy square feet, uh, along, uh, the side, actually facing the stoplight there. As you may or may not know, Lake Street curves around from one side of the building to another side of the building to a stoplight, uh, of V F W highway, which would be a third side of the building. The fourth side being the parking lot facing Domino's, which is, uh, uh, the opposite end of, of the, the face that we're looking to put a sign on. Um, so we're looking for relief for internal illumination and, uh, for this sign. And that, uh, we are not looking to put anything on V F W, so under number ten, the proposed condition about, uh, the Domino's sign being moved, that'd be the free sign, standing sign, we're not looking, uh, to do that, uh, put a sign there that would require that, uh, proposed condition. So, uh, concluding with, uh, their number eleven, uh, as the other, other tenants have illuminated signage, internally illuminated signage. Uh, the development services did not have any concern about the proposed signage that we have. And so we would just ask that, um, uh, the board consider approving the internally illuminated signage on the one wall. But allow, um, future signage, possible future signage, uh, facing Lake Street up to, um, I think they said sixty-five square feet. Yes, um, on that side. So that, uh, if the tenant, uh, decides to pursue another sign, they wouldn't, uh, need to go back through this approval process again. They could just go for a permit.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate your information. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Dennis?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a couple of comments, but, um, I, I really like the way the sign kind of sets on the, uh, sign band on the building. I really think that location is well suited to this, at the front door on that side, makes a lot of sense. Um, the green, um, almost oval with the yellow African word, um, written through it. Is it just the yellow letters that are channel letters that are lit? Or is it the entire green oval that's a plexiglass piece with the yellow letters? I'm, I'm just kind of, how is that channel letters?
Uh, that, that is a capsule, uh, for that word. So it has one, uh, flat face surface, uh, with the green background and the yellow letters.
Got it, okay. And is that the same case for tropical food as well?
Yes.
So we have a white shape there that kind of is, uh, lit up at night and then the green letters, tropical food and the logo reading through it?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Um, and would it be your intent that the sign in the future on Lakeview Ave would match the sign? And I would like to see if we are to go ahead with a condition that we, um, grant you up to sixty-five square feet of signage on Lakeview Ave located in the sign band as you did here, um, matching this sign, design. Because I, it's hard for me to kind of grant you a privilege to put signage without seeing it first. So, is that your intent that it would match this sign?
It was, um, actually, we did have one draft of a potential design, which was much smaller, probably about, uh, probably about fifteen square feet uh, of, of raised letters, non-illuminated, but on the wall. Uh, and it would be a smaller version of, of this, of the name and the logo, uh, because that particular area is a little bit smaller, but it would just to put something on that, that side, so it, it would, um, uh, but, but, but that, the, the budget and the funding for that are not available at this time, so we're, we're just going forward with this one.
Okay, but that would be your intent, that it would be just a smaller scale version of this sign?
Yes.
That will be on that side? So we could make a condition that you could have up to sixty-five square feet of signage in that sign band location on Lakeview Ave, uh, that would match this sign at a smaller scale?
Yes.
Great. Okay, I think you've done a nice job here. I'm really excited about this business in this location. I think this is a good market here for this, um, I'm surprised that, um, your parking will work out for your store. I'm, I hope that it all does, but, uh, not much parking here, but as long as it all works, good luck to that and I'm glad to see you open here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, too.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Brier speaking. Now, this seems pretty straightforward, I'll, I'll vote in support and I wish the African market great success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
George?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I, I actually agree with, uh, Mr. Brier that I, I think it's a great addition. Um, I don't know if there's, if there is any restrictions on a light, the lighting of, of, is it going to be all night? That, that would be one of my questions, because I, I'm not sure unless someone on, on the board can, can tell me. But I'm not sure if Domino's is up all night, so. That would be a question for, um, the African market is the timing of how you want to keep that, the light up.
All night?
You have it on all night or just when you're open?
Oh, it's open.
Uh, the, the, the intent is to have it on, uh, just while they're open or perhaps, you know, going one hour past. Uh, but, uh, because people may still be in the store, um, you know, closing down registers and moving stock and so forth. But, uh, uh, the intent is not to have the sign illuminated all night, no.
Okay, well, I, I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood and, and, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Robert?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I have no objection to this, uh, petition. Um, the sign looks, uh, a pleasant sign and, uh, the only thing I would, you know, the gist is when they do the next sign, you know, if they could, uh, let us know so that we could, you know, make sure it, uh, it conforms. But, yeah, I have no objection to the petition as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Ben?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just to the outcome, like, uh, like my colleagues say, I think this is pretty straightforward. Um, you know, in terms of marketing and, and highlighting the, the business, uh, I, I just want to thank you on your investment to the city and, uh, I wish you the best, best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Sean?
Uh, thank you through, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I agree with my fellow board members, this is a, no, a very good, uh, good project, uh, with the signage. And, uh, I guess the only questions I have are, uh, so this, you're going to have the sign facing Lakeview Ave, but no, uh, signage on the corner, uh, where the entry of Lakeview Ave, uh, proposed, like, on the corner of the, uh, building to try to get some, uh, see, see, I see people pulling into Lake, pulling off of, uh, V F W into Lakeview Ave, we got the corner of the building there. Um, but there's no signage on that corner of the building, just to kind of steer people towards, uh, towards the business at all? Or is it, or is that still kind of, that's, that's part of the, uh, future plan? It, it's true that if you're going, I believe it would be east on, uh, Veterans, uh, V F W highway there, that you would not see this sign. However, if you are on Lakeview and you come around to the stoplight and stop, you will, you know, turn to the right and see the sign. And then from the, uh, intersection over at Bridge Street and, and Veterans Highway, uh, coming, uh, towards this building, uh, you would, you would have a very good view of the sign. coming towards this building, you would have a very good view of the sign as you approach the stoplight. There is no access off the highway. You do have to take a right to get to the parking lot. So, I believe, I don't know if that's true for Domino's. Actually, I don't remember if there's access on that side or not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there is either on that. I mean, as far as the VFW side is concerned, cross that bridge when you get to it. Maybe fighting, maybe fighting with Domino's on that instance too is they got their signage there as well. So, but, but I hope he went out on that. Anyways, I think it's, I think it's fine. I think one of the conditions we usually put on as far as illumination is concerned is one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or business closing, whichever comes first. So, that's usually the pretty much the standard that we're using with regards to the illumination hours, if you're in agreement with that. And I'm, I gotta, so is this, is this, the business is moving out of downtown to this new location? Or is this extending?
Keeping both.
You're keeping both? Oh, that's, that's, that's fantastic. You know, it's just outstanding to see that, you know, the business is, the business is growing like that. I mean, whether you were expanding or not, but you are expanding because you're putting a second location in. And it's just fantastic to see local business owners like yourself invest in the community and grow and expand and it's just, it's just great for everybody. And I wish the, wish it the absolute best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, sir, you've heard the comments of the board. We will condition the second sign as a not to exceed. The current sign will be granted approval for illumination one hour prior to opening or dawn, whichever comes first, or one hour after closing, or one hour after dusk, whichever comes first. That will allow you full visibility throughout your entire workday. And I too would like to congratulate you and thank you for your business in the city and expansion. And I wish you the best of luck over there as you move forward, you know, providing your store services for the, for the community at large. With that being said, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
At three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021 dash seven eight for seventy-eight, seventy-nine Lakeview Avenue for special permit under section six point three to erect an internally illuminated sign with the conditions that any future signage shall not exceed the up to sixty-five square feet of the signage on Lakeview Ave. And the second condition is one hour before, internal illumination is to occur one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or closing, whichever comes later.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May I have a second?
Thank you. Let's go to seconds.
Thank you, George. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman, turn.
Approval conditions.
Vice Chairman, back.
Approved with condition.
Member Callahan?
Approved with condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Briar?
Approved with conditions.
Member Proko?
Approved with conditions.
Member Narohe?
Approved with conditions.
Gentlemen, you've been unanimously approved, continued success and best of luck.
Thank you very much. Is our next step to go and apply for an actual permit?
Yes, if you can, you can follow up with DPD via email and they'll walk you through the next phases.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate your approval.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you for your preparation. That being said, we're going to move forward to ZBA twenty twenty-one dash four for a special permit. Coljack Development Corporation at six ninety-eight seven oh six Lawrence Street. Coljack, Article twelve, Coljack Development Corporation has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit approval to construct a duplex at six nine eight dash seven oh six Lawrence Street. The subject property is located in the traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district and requires a special permit under Article twelve for use and any other relief required on Lowell's ordinance. Is the representative position here this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodore representing the applicant. And with me tonight is...
Good evening, Counselor.
How are you?
I'm well, sir.
We were here before the board on March twenty-second. And we left the meeting that night with the board asking for some additional information with respect to the fire safety and also with respect to traffic. And since that period of time, and we welcome that to make an informed decision. And there were also comments from, from the butters that weren't addressed at that time either. So, since, since that, that, that meeting, the DPD has obtained information from the fire department. And the fire department had indicated that they conferred with the state fire marshal and the state fire marshal indicated that, that the development could proceed as designed. And Deputy Chief James Normandin took the position that perhaps as a safety measure, he recommended that a sprinkler system, a thirteen D residential sprinkler system be installed to mitigate any fire risk. So, I'm here to report to the board with respect to that recommendation that we would comply with that request and we would comply with that as a condition if a decision was made for approval. Also, information was requested from the police department with respect to data with respect to accidents in the area. And there has been no data that has been provided by the police department. It is not surprising that the police department has taken a conservative view on it, in their opinion. But there was no data that has been provided. Now, with respect to the butters, there are two, two immediate butters. One immediate, two butters who live at seven fourteen Lawrence Street, which is right on, right on the street adjacent to the southerly side of the property. And that's owned by Rosa Bonilla. Now, I promised when I spoke with Rosa on Saturday and Sunday that I would not put any words into her mouth. So, I'm just going to state what I said and represented to Rosa. And also, the owner of seven twelve Lawrence Street came. Leila is, is, is her name. I've just got her first name. I believe she's on here tonight. She owns the property in the rear at seven twelve Lawrence Street. Again, a budding on the southerly side of the premises. Now, there were concerns with respect to how we were going to construct the property in our discussions. Now, we, we discussed it with Rosa on Saturday. And then I went to the site with the developer, Tim Juzak, on Sunday. And we spoke with Rosa by phone to identify issues on the site. And Leila was also there. And what we did when, when, there she is. What we did when, when we discussed this, they pointed out concerns. Number one, how is the property going to be constructed? Are we going to dig down for a foundation? She, so we informed her we're building on a slab. But we will have to dig down below grade to install utilities. The utilities, however, would be sufficiently away from her property line, more or less to the middle of the, of the site itself. That's where, where I was informed by my client that they were located. Also, there was an issue with respect to, there's a large boulder on that side that, that, that is adjacent to her property line, that we would be removing that, blasting that. And we informed her that there's no blasting at all, that we would not be touching that, that boulder that is there, that is on our side of the property on the site, that it doesn't impact the buildout. We would not be touching that. Also, from the site plan that, that we have, it shows an encroachment of a stockade fence on our property. And that encroachment area there, we were informed that there's a small patio there, some plantings there that is used by Ms. Bonilla. And we informed her that we would grant her an easement to allow her and permit her to use that in the fashion that she has. And then that would be a requirement or a condition that would be written into this, if we were to obtain approval. And we would not disturb at all where she stores her garbage at all as well, which is on the corner along the street. We also informed Ms. Bonilla and Leila that we would be attentive to their concerns when we started construction, that we would meet with them, that we would provide them with a construction schedule and that we would also be attentive and concerned with respect to any damage that would be done during construction to the sidewalk in front of the premises. That's something that is required in any event during this course of construction that we would have to repair it. So, I would hope that we, in discussing that and while we were at the site and on the phone with, with Rosa, that we, we addressed her concerns and that we would be able to, and also we informed her that we would be installing the, the fire suppression system, the sprinkler system, that would be another concern to, so that no one would, would worry about how, that would mitigate any, any, any danger with respect to the fire. And the end result of this would be that we would be able to construct, if we have the approval, to clean this area up, to clean the debris up. And as I would always say, and I'm sure everyone agrees that a vacant lot does no one any good. And on top of all of this, this is an extremely important board. And the board has the opinion that to be able to put yourself in a position where you can, where you can provide appeal so that additional housing can be created. The state through Governor Baker's office is going through what they call the Housing Choice Initiative. And in the Housing Choice Initiative, there will be public hearings that will be presented where the Commonwealth has indicated that the state must provide and build more of a diverse housing stock to support the growing economy and to change with the changing population, the housing choices. And municipalities such as the city of Lowell are drivers whether or not additional housing can be built and added to the housing stock. And municipalities such as the city of Lowell, for their role in zoning and in permitting, are extremely vital in allowing cities to be partners with the Commonwealth and providing this additional housing. Now, I'd like to take that a step further in that there's also the risk that is involved with the developers such as Timothy Juzak of Coljack Development in the risk that they take in becoming partners as well in making the investment and going through the process of taking a blighted lot, getting it permitted through the city and properly vetted and to go ahead and take the risk and do the new construction for resale. So, I hope that we've addressed the concerns from our last meeting. And I hope I can find, obtain the support of the board to approve this.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate the background information as always. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition?
Mr. Chairman, I know we do have the two, we do have the two butters. I'm not sure if they want to speak, but I know, I know Attorney Theodore did mention, did mention their presence. But I just want to make sure everybody's got the opportunity to speak.
Yep.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, my name is Rosa. I am the butter at seven fourteen.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, that'd be appreciated.
Yep, Rosa Bonilla, seven fourteen Lawrence Street here in Lowell, Mass.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I did speak with the attorney, well, George, in regards. He did put me at ease with some of, you know, the information he gave me for going for. We didn't have that information in the beginning. I am not going to lie and sugarcoat this and say I am completely free of any reservations of a house going in there. There are concerns. Parking is still going to be a concern in this area. Anyone who has traveled down the street knows that this is a busy street. It is also a street that restricts parking during parking ban emergencies. On this street alone, there is pretty much no off-street parking. There is a building in front that has nine units. And between here and the triple-decker, I, between the two lot, between my house and the lot, you know, it's a, it's a total of about, let's see, I actually wrote this down. We have approximately twenty-three units. And then when I say twenty-three, twenty-three units, nine across the street, five here and then the three units and then my unit. So, that's twenty-three apartments buying for parking space. So, potentially if we were to just say the one car apiece, that's twenty-three cars. There's also another complex that was built and it does have off-street parking. So, that is going to be the brick building, I'm not exactly sure of the address, so I do apologize, that was developed into apartments. And they park on Lawrence Street as well. So, parking is always an issue. Unfortunately, it's a great idea to go ahead and put in. I am in agreement. I don't like the fact that there was a vacant lot there. It does lend to some people that we don't want back there, doing things that we don't want happening. So, it would be great to have something in there. My concern though is that now our limited parking space has become more limited because of the three spots that would have been in front of that unit are now being taken. So, I do understand that they will receive four parking spaces, but the neighborhood itself loses three. So, these are just concerns that I'm looking at. And I just wanted to just kind of bring that out. He did address some issues and concerns I had. There was an encroachment. Again, I purchased this property. This encroachment has been there for twenty-plus years. So, it sits on a boulder. That boulder is actually a part of my foundation that goes into the back part of my foundation. These houses were built in nineteen hundred, so a hundred and twenty-one-year-old homes are, I guess that's the way they're built. So, my concerns were addressed as far as him making sure that that boulder would not at all be touched and moved because of foundation issues. I, it would shift my foundation. The house behind me actually shares that boulder. So, it's, it's, it's a really weird little situation that we have going in through here. So, and I know that they have had the house behind me, as I looked into property records, also had foundation issues that were shored up years ago. So, that could be a little bit concerning. So, we're just concerned, I'm, I'm speaking for myself and seven twelve, and then she can jump in at any point just to say that we're, we are concerned, we want to make sure that if the developer, if this is put through, that there are some safeguards for our property where we're having someone come in. You know, they're going to make sure that they are, you know, photographing, making sure there's, you know, no cracks before and then doing it after, because I just don't want to have an issue later on. Again, I'm not completely opposed to having a home going in. We think it is, it's going to be in benefit us. We're concerned about parking, but we're always concerned about parking. That is kind of the nature of the beast that we're in, living here. And we took that on. You know, going into this, I knew that, you know, there was no off-street parking. But you know what? It is what it is. It's Lowell. So I'm not concerned about that. But I am concerned of how it's going to impact all of the neighbors. And like I said, I was trying to be conservative, but if you start adding up parking spaces in this neighborhood, there is a fire station that you can't park on that side of the road. There's no parking in front of one of the houses completely because then you're going into the housing complex. So it's very limited as far as parking. So that would probably be my only concern, that we're going to actually lose off-street parking for three cars. And that's neighborhood cars. Again, they'll pick up their parking, which is great. That would be it. My concerns were also because during construction, we do have a veterans home down the street. I'm very concerned as far as how that construction is going to take place, because they need to utilize that sidewalk. I make sure that I'm, winter, it's always clean so that they're able to get through and go to the stores. You know, we're going to be starting up schools again. Right in front of my house, between this and the lot, there are three school bus stops that stop here. So, you know, there's children entering and exiting, school buses, hopefully soon, let's cross our fingers. So that's something else I was looking at. So there's a lot that playing in. Like I said, in speaking with George, he did straighten out any concerns I had for my particular property. Leila, I'm not sure if you want to jump in. I'm gonna step out. Those were my concerns, and thank you for your time.
For me as well, was the concern, because with me, I have the retaining. With me, it was the same.
Pardon me, ma'am. Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Lila Espala. I'm at 712 Lawrence Street, apartment two.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello. My only concern as speaking with George was with my retaining wall. I'm on the side, my, with the retaining wall, behind it, the yard. So with me, with the retaining wall, the concern, and the boulder also being towards the front of my house. He also put me at ease, and my concern with the wall and... I'm sorry, I have little ones, so that's why I keep muting and coming in and out, so I apologize for this.
No worries. We certainly understand.
I'm gonna mute for one second to let them know.
Okay.
I have twins that are 10. My apologies.
No, no worries. We certainly understand. We appreciate it.
Well, my concern was that, especially with the safety, I have little ones. And so my fear was that if they start digging into the boulders, would it affect the health shifting? I have little ones. I have twins that are 10 and an 11-year-old. So when speaking with George, he put me at ease, and he can tell you, and the fire access to my house. I live behind houses. So to me, my fear was, okay, so if now I'm behind two houses, and then the only access was to me, was the vacant area. Now there's gonna be another house built back there with maybe like 10 feet between me and that other house. How are they gonna access me? Well, with speaking with George as well, he explained to me and explained about the the water, the special hydrants that they were gonna put, the water spring pliers and everything. So that as well put me at ease. My concerns as well as parking, because it is very, as it is right now, without them taking up any driveway, it is hard finding parking, especially with the brick building. Like Rosa said, counting just one vehicle, a house, not everybody has one vehicle. There's some houses that have more than one. So that's just going by one is very hard as it is. Parking concerns is another issue that is concerning, but not, I knew what I was getting into when I moved in here as well. It's Lowell. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and coming on this evening. It's a special concern. That being said, any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Mark?
Mark, will you be speaking, Mr. Chairman? My concerns have been satisfied. I will vote in favor of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner seems to have addressed the concerns we had last time. In as much as, you know, they're gonna have four parking spots in, off-street parking spots. So I think that's gonna, that's helpful. The concerns we had, fire safety have been addressed. The traffic issue has been, we got a response from the, from the police department that that area is safe. So I think I would like to say this project will have a positive impact in the neighborhood. It's gonna have a, it's gonna remove the blight and it's gonna increase housing stocks. So I think I'm in favor of approving this petition, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert. Ben?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. You know, I think this is actually a good addition to the neighborhood in terms of, you know, additional housing. You know, I know this particular parcel in this neighborhood, it's a very tight, scary, tight area. You know, and also, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to really applaud the applicants, you know, Mr. Theodores, you know, the neighbors, the abutters. You know, it seems like everyone kind of came together, tried to work out, you know, some differences they had. And obviously, I think there are still some other areas that people are not 100% agreeable upon. But I think a lot of compromise and a lot of kind of teamwork collaboration went into this project. So hopefully, I think the end project will work out ultimately for the entirety of the whole city and the community. So I do want to acknowledge that, and we're working together. So those are just my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we can see, communication is the key here. My main concern has been addressed, the traffic, and which I thought would have brought out, you know, more, more issues, but apparently not. My other main concern was the abutters. Can you hear me? Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, my main concern was also the concerns of the abutters, which with the, with the counselor speaking to them and having that discussion, and the fact that they can come to a compromise, I think, you know, to me, this would be a great. It's a great addition. And once that the abutters feel comfortable, I think just based on all the information that we've had about the project itself, I think it would be a great project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, George. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think from the last hearing, we were, everybody was in agreement that this piece of property was of liked and really needs some beautifying, you know, to some extent. And the project itself was workable. And we obviously had our concerns, the neighbors had, the abutters had their concerns. As far as the city was concerned, I mean, my concern was the traffic itself, as well as the fire. Both have come back, the fires come back and explained that they had no issues with it. We didn't really hear anything from the police department about the traffic, but it sounds to me like they really had no concerns, otherwise I'm sure they would have expressed. Because of the area where this property was located, which is a major thoroughway with two streets breaking off a bit where there's heavy traffic on a daily basis. I commend the petitioners. I also commend the residents, Ms. Benia and Ms. Espala, everybody coming together to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors and what they all had. To the point that we're kind of in some form of agreement, in some form of agreement here. We're all in agreement that something needs to be done with the property. And looking at it and taking into account and going through the the requirements for the special permit, I, based on the fact that, well, there will be those conditions, Attorney Theodore, if we got to the sprinklers, and as well as the easement to Ms. Benia that you stated, I think this now, this seems like a workable project that would be beneficial to the city. Hopefully beneficial. Sounds like some of them are beneficial to the neighbors as well, as you, Ms. Benia and Ms. Espala said, well, you know, people, some people are hanging out in that vacant lot that you really don't want hanging out there. And I'm sure that whoever ultimately goes into this, once the project's built, and whoever ultimately goes into these these units, you're gonna have new neighbors that hopefully, hopefully you're gonna get along with very, very, very well. And it becomes more beneficial to the neighborhood. With that, with the conditions that have been proposed, I would be in approval of the project and wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I first want to say thank you to Rosa and Lila for coming out a second time and sharing your concerns and being involved citizens here. And I hope Dylan and Francesca and Jessica here, these concerned for parking in this neighborhood. This is certainly something that I don't think was clear in the recent survey that was done for off-street parking in neighborhoods in this location. So I'm glad you're voicing this, and the city is here to hear it, and we definitely need to address it. That being said, I think that the applicant has a right to develop this lot. And the amount of concessions that the city is making to grant these special permits is, seems like it's reasonable. Especially we have four spaces are being provided for these two units, and the two units are only being built as two-bedroom. So I think that what the applicant has done here is commendable as far as the restraint shown and the interest in serving the community and working with the community. But obviously, parking is gonna be a problem, and it's not something that's easily addressed, even, you know. I don't know what we could change here to address it, to tell you the truth. But that being said, George, if you could just, Attorney Theodore, if you could just state why three spaces are being lost. As I see it, there's two driveways going in at 15 feet wide. Is that gonna be a net loss of three parking spaces? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think it's gonna, I didn't propose, I didn't mention that. I didn't put that number out at all. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mention that. We've got the two curb cuts, so I don't see a loss of three spaces there.
Right. Doing the math, it could be as little as two, but still it's a loss.
It's a loss, yeah.
Right. And we're displacing up to six parking spaces that are currently being used on the lot that are not supposed to be used on the lot. So there's a significant change here for sure. A little bit of home, a little bit of addressing the plans, though, the building height, is that addressed on the?
Yes, it was. I believe we addressed it last time. Was it, and David, you could fill me in on this, was it 29 and a half feet of the building height?
That's correct. 29.4, I'm sorry, David Fielden from Landplex Engineering and Surveying. It was 29.4. We hadn't yet updated the plan based on waiting to see the outcome of the meeting between Attorney Theodore and the abutters and what, if any other changes would be made. But that can definitely be a condition is to update the plan of the building height and anything else that is required by the board.
I think that that'd be terrific to make that a condition, that the site plan, I think, which states TBD, that that change to indicate something less than 45 feet, that 29 or whatever it happens to be would be terrific. And then I noticed on the revised site plan that you're showing a lot of drainage, subsurface drainage and gravel drainage. Has that been reviewed by the city as far as making, I think there was a comment that that it was to be, I think it was building, let me see where that is, wastewater, utility department condition, applicant should obtain stormwater permit. So the document that you're proposing here, the revised site plan, that shows the stormwater design, is that correct?
That's correct. It has the subsurface storm tech units, infiltration units at the, in the rear of the property that would be connected to the roof drain. And that would also be included in the revised plan.
It's on the revised plan now?
It will be included in the revised plan. I'm sorry.
I think it is on the site, on the revised plan now.
It is. Okay. Then it will remain on the revised plan. I'm looking at the original. I apologize. But...
So I don't know if you need that condition then, that was suggested, that we provide a condition for the stormwater permit. If you're already showing the design for the stormwater on the revised site plan, I think we just need the condition for the building height to be provided on the plan. I think. All right. Other than that, I am thrilled at how this worked out, except for the fact that you didn't find 23 spaces for the rest of the residents to use. That would have been a win. But then it...
One thing, Dennis, that we do need, there's, and it was a clarification that I received from Jessica, that there is one variance required for the garage setback. It was confusion last meeting that I asked for two, but you clarified it, that it actually is just one variance for the garage setback. So we would be looking for that variance in the special permit.
Terrific. I think you're right. Great. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. But that being said, I do want to, you know, express my appreciation to the neighbors, the citizens to come out two times to voice their, their opinion and their experience with Counselor Theodore and DPD and how this process works, because it affects their daily life. And it affects their neighborhood and their safety and their children. And I think it's very valuable when citizens participate with city government and private entities. And fortunately, Mr. State Councilor Theodore has come to the table once again and has used communications, understanding of the law, the use of the board knowledge to convey to the abutters the open transparency of the process and what will take place. And blight is a light word I'll settle on for a vacant lot in the city. Now, the housing needs, as we know, are increasing, and to be able to come together as a community group and move forward, satisfactory is always a pleasurable experience on this board, sharing that with the citizens, colleagues, and the petitioner. So we are looking at the conditions set forth. And that being said, we can move forward to Mr. Clerk. You have a motion, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to clarify, just make sure we've got all the conditions up there, Attorney Theodore. So we have, one is the 13, the installation of 13D residential sprinkler system to be installed in the property. Second is the granting of the easement to the owners at 714 Lawrence Street, I believe, Miss Benia?
That's correct. Well, the easement to the, for the encroachment with the stockade fences and a replacement, we will replace the stockade fence as well.
Okay, so we got that. Third, I have building height to be provided on revised site plans. Dennis, and was there anything else too?
Nope, that's it. They satisfied stormwater already on the supervised site plan.
Yeah, okay. So those are, those are the conditions. Just wanted to make sure, Dylan, you got those, correct?
Yes, I do. I can read them back to you just to confirm.
Okay, why don't we do that?
They will install 13D residential sprinkler system at the property. They will grant an easement to the Butters at 7, I have the address, but 7 something Lawrence Street. And we'll replace the stockade fence and that the building height will be provided on the revised site plans.
And you're in agreement with that, obviously, Attorney Theodore?
That is correct.
Great. So with that, so we actually have to do a special permit, two votes, a special permit and a variance, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we'll start with a special permit, so with that, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-4 for 698 706 Lawrence Street for a special permit approval under Section 12.1. B to construct two-family residential building with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second, please? Seconded by Mr. Vice Chairman Peck. We have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Vice Chairman Peck?
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve what conditions?
Member McCarthy?
Prove with conditions.
Member Briere?
Prove with conditions.
Member Proco?
Prove with conditions.
And Member Nuroe?
Prove with conditions.
Council, you've been unanimously approved the special permit. Now we have a motion for the variance, please.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-4 for variance approval under Section 5.1 for garage setback with the previously mentioned condition for 698-706 Lawrence.
I have a second.
George Proko, seconds.
Seconded by George Proko, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve a condition.
Vice Chairman Peck?
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Prove with conditions.
And Member McCarthy?
Prove with conditions.
Member Briere?
Prove with conditions.
Member Proco?
Prove with conditions.
And Member Nuroe?
Prove with conditions.
Well, Counselor and Petitioner, your variance has been approved unanimously. Once again, we thank you for your efforts and your communication and your professionalism, presentation, preparedness in this continued process and we wish you the best of luck with the build and the project over there, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Rosa and Leila for their communication. And we certainly appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, our pleasure. You too, sir. Thank you. When we forward into new business, we have a special permit and variance, ZBA 2021-8 for Lowell Housing Authority at 572-610 Lakeview Avenue, Section 4.5 and Section 6.1. Lowell Housing Authority has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit and variance approval to extend the existing non-conforming use and non-conforming number of off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit for the addition of an ADA accessible residential unit and parking space. The subject property is located in traditional multifamily TML zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval under Section 4.5 for non-conforming uses and variance approval under 6.1 for parking requirements and then the other relief under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Is there a representation tonight?
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Mr. Briere, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I must respectfully recuse myself from judgment of this petition as I am employed by the Lowell Housing Authority as property manager of 572-610 Lakeview Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. We appreciate your comments and your notice. That being said, you're a petitioner, represented a few times.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jonathan Goldfield. I'm a capital asset manager with the Lowell Housing Authority. And I'm just briefly introducing the project. The main part of the presentation will be by our project architect Nora Scholl, who is also with us now with Next Phase Studios Inc. of Boston. Very briefly, from my perspective, this is a project that's being funded by a grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development, about a $1.24 million grant to update those units that were built in the mid-'50s through what's called a MOD Phase Grant, modernizing public housing and serving elders. We're very proud to have gotten this project grant. As you know from the documentation, we are, probably the highlights of it are we're adding an addition on, which is a handicap fully accessible unit and converting another unit, abutting it to also a fully accessible unit, as well as landscape work, updating the facilities in general, kitchens and baths and things of that nature. I'll be, I'll be on for the duration of the presentation and I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to present this to you. We hope for a positive outcome. We are pretty convinced that this is not substantially more detrimental. We think it's a tremendous asset to the community and the housing stock that we're improving. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Nora Scholl, who's our project architect.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks, Jonathan. So I have the site plan ready, so I think I'll just share my screen because that just might be easier as we walk through everything to have the visual of what's going on. So this is the existing site that I have pulled up. As Jonathan mentioned, so we're doing a full modernization of this development, which consists of 20 residential units, and that is four one-bedroom units and then 16 studio apartments. They're all low-income housing and there are no accessible dwelling units currently on the site. So as part of our proposal, we are going to add two accessible units. And we'll do that by adding an addition in this location. So the site consists of these five existing buildings. We've selected this middle building with the addition right here. As part of our project, we're also proposing multiple site improvements. So this will include making the site fully accessible. So these are the existing pathways here and we are proposing to redo them all to create these fully accessible walkways around the development as well as new seating areas on the exterior. And these are important for the development because there are no interior common spaces currently and so these will be used to foster community within this development. We're also redoing the parking area. We're going to be adding the two accessible parking spaces to accommodate our new accessible units and we're going to be clearly designating this drop-off area because the tenants currently do a lot of daily activities where someone comes in, picks up the tenants and then brings them off-site to complete shopping or, you know, activities elsewhere. And so it's important to maintain this so they can have a clear designated pickup-drop-off space. And then finally, we are adding, if I go to the last landscape plan, some new plantings along the western side of the property here to create a visual barrier between our existing development and the VFW Highway, which runs along here. And so it'll be a nice visual barrier for our tenants, but also, you know, a nice feature along the VFW Highway as well as, you know, around the neighborhood to see from the other side. So during our work, we explored multiple options on how to achieve this ADA accessible unit. However, due to the existing size of the units, it was really difficult to come up with a solution that fit it completely on the inside to provide all the clearances that are required for MMAB, MAAB. So, you know, the footprint of the unit was just too small, the studio apartment's about 300 square feet. The one-bedroom is 385. So we also explored potentially merging two units, but it was really important to keep all of the housing stock available without eliminating anything, which is what led us to this addition. So we feel the design that we're proposing is really the best solution because we're tucking it into the middle of the development. So visually, it's not impacting the neighbors. The design itself, we're keeping within the character of the existing buildings, which are all single-story masonry, gable roof, so we're gonna match everything. And then importantly, we're not removing any of the existing housing stock from the Housing Authority. We're providing a fully new unit that will be completely ADA accessible. We're also doing the conversion of the neighboring unit to be ADA accessible. Beyond that, you know, we're doing all the site improvements that I mentioned earlier. We're gonna be reducing the amount of impervious hardscape on the site. We're providing the new parking spaces, although minimal, but we're also not pulling away from the existing street parking. And then we're adding, you know, the extensive planting along the back of the property. So we're asking for relief for, to extend our non-conforming use of the multifamily development since we're above seven units and we're going from 20 to 21 units. We're also asking for relief for the parking. As two parking spaces are required per unit, which would put us at 42 units total, but we're only providing eight. And we did discuss this further with the Housing Authority, but again, because there's no exterior or interior common spaces to this development, maintaining the exterior to be these kind of community activity areas was really important. So we'd looked at adding some parking here and parking here, but we thought it would be important to maintain for the Housing Authority to be as common space and also most of the tenants don't drive, they take public transportation. And so adding these parking spaces that wouldn't actually be used by the tenants and taking away the neighboring street parking just was not, not something we thought we should do. So we feel with our proposal that it really aligns with, you know, the city's comprehensive massive plan. We're providing more low-income housing, specifically ADA accessible housing, which is really important and lacking. We're increasing the amount of off-street parking for our development, but in line with what, you know, our site should support. And, you know, we're adding some plantings along the rear as well as other improvements, like removing asphalt. So we feel that overall the impact of our development is gonna be a really positive one for the community, a positive one for the city and the Housing Authority. And I think, Jonathan, do you have anything else you'd like to add or I think that?
Sure, thank you, Nora. Just, we are in contact and we, after the development of these plans, we actually had a conference with the wastewater folks, Mike Store and those folks, and I've met on-site with the city's building commissioner and the deputy fire chief, Normandin, to discuss sprinklers. And the recommendation was to sprinkle this small building as well, but not the other two, the other L-shaped buildings. So we're working at compliance with both the fire department and the building commissioner as well on that. And we're working on the stormwater CSO issues that we discussed with Mr. Store as well.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. We appreciate the overview and the extensive knowledge and what's gonna be taking place at this posse. And that being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see this as a straightforward project. I feel that it's within the city of Lowell that they would have followed their own guidelines. I don't have any issues, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, it seems that the improvements outweigh the relief being sought for this project. So we're only getting, it's only one extra unit as opposed to, you know, there were 20 before and now we're just gonna get one more and it's gonna be 21. But the relief is minor and I think the improvements will have a positive impact and I see no, I see no issue here as well, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just think this is a tremendous application that you're making for the relief being sought, the improvements being made on the site, especially the reduction of impervious, the improvements of the walkways, the landscaping. It's gonna be a huge boost, I think, to the residents that will be occupying these units as well as the city itself. And I just want to mention, Jessica, I thought your comments were exceptional this time. I was really thrilled to read them. Dylan, you did great comments too, but I thought, Jessica, your comments were really tremendous here. I do want to ask about the curb cut going to 86 feet. Is that, does that require relief? Does anyone know? I think that we have a curb cut guideline typically that's, and we're extending, we're expanding it from current dimension of, I'm not sure what it is, 60 feet or something, to 86 feet. Is there relief being required there that we missed? Does anyone know?
I'm not sure. I don't have the application in front of me.
I don't know off the top of my head either, but I can check the zoning.
Right, you know, this reminds me of relief that we had for EMS Lowell on Pawtucket Street when they were looking at the crossings. They had a relief sought for, I think it was 100 feet or something of a curb cut and we talked about the pedestrians in that area and how they would be warned. We're not talking about a lot of active parking here and I just want to make sure we're not missing something that we're not overlooking safety hazard with a curb cut that wide. And just as a question, I think I know the answer. Was there any thought of reconfiguring the parking to lessen the curb cut and make a safer situation for vehicles that have to now all back out onto Lakeview Avenue as they currently do?
We looked at that, I believe, but it just, it's the most efficient in order to get the, you know, the same amount of parking spaces with the ADA. And for the ADA to turn, it really reduces the amount of parking you can fit. And so while there isn't a huge demand with the residents and parking on the site, it was important to try to maintain at least the number that we had previously when we added the ADA parking spaces.
Sure, sure. We don't have any traffic safety issues? I mean, I don't know if, Jessica, in your review of this, if anything came up regarding accidents in this area with vehicles backing out and now that we're expanding it by two spaces?
I did not receive any comments from LPD on this one. So I don't have any traffic accident data.
Okay, all right. And then my last question is, was there any thought more regarding sustainability? We have a tremendous roof here that would support... We have a tremendous roof here that would support solar. And is there any thought that these, at least the addition would be designed structurally to support it? And thoughts of adding it?
We hadn't discussed integrating solar yet into the project. As they had, they've actually just redone the roofs for these buildings. And this is a newer roof. And so I don't know if Jonathan can speak more to if they have plans for solar, but it hasn't been part of our discussions and that.
No, no, we haven't had any plans to do solar. We're something we can discuss. I don't have it in the budget right now for that type of a thing. We do have some of our state sites, we are using solar net metering. We've got a seventy-six acre site out in Westbrook Field that is probably solar net metering that is attached. I can't confirm that right now with this development. Since we have about seven hundred kilowatts for state sites that are from that program. So it's not so much on the unit, but out in Westbrook Field, and we're getting the net meter credits for that.
Dennis, you still there?
I don't know if we lost John.
John's still there. He's just muted.
Oh, he's muted. Okay.
Yeah, I think he was completed, equated. His answer to Dennis' question, I don't know if Dennis is still on, though.
Dennis, any other comments or concerns? Are you there? I don't know. Did we lose Mr. McCarthy? Apparently, it looks like he's dropped out or... So why don't we move on to Van? And if Sean, when Dennis comes back, we'll bring him in.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. You know, I really think this application is really just an amazing application. I really think the kind of things that it needs for to go through with it always, the benefits. The benefits are way more in favor of any belief they may be seeking. You know, the kind of the modernization and just upgrades to the properties. And, you know, I think this is really going to impact so many, so many families and people who use the Low Housing Authority as a place and, you know, to live and even future generation family as they, you know, kind of work their way through through everything and move up and move out. So I really think this is a great project. And, you know, anything I do to support this, I would, I would in a heartbeat. So I wish the applicant the very best of luck. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. This is actually a fantastic, fantastic presentation, fantastic project. I'm very excited about this. I especially like the fact that you're putting in the walkways, beautifying the whole area. Especially the most impressive thing, obviously, is the tree line in the back that you're putting all these different types of shrubbery back there, trees, drops and whatnot. It looks, I think it's just going to look, it's just going to make the whole area, the whole project. The whole site just looks fantastic. One question I do have, though, as regards to the parking. I know you have a designated, you noted this designated drop-off, drop-up, pickup-drop-off area. Any plans to signage on there to just make sure that people know that they can't park there permanently? That's basically for a limited drop-off, drop-on?
Yeah. It'll be paved on the pavement itself. And then if additional, like, post-signage is needed, we can like that as well, but
Yeah, I think, yeah, both areas, I think, yeah, you probably should need something like similar to the handicap spots. I'm sure you can have them painted with signage. I think the drop-off, you know, pickup-drop-off area also should have something designated there as well, just to kind of make sure that people know that they can't park there permanently or
No, that's an excellent idea. That's, in fact, how it functions when the vans and programs pick up and drop off people typically. That is how it functions. It would be nice to formalize that. It's a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah. I think I'm just going to throw it in as a condition anyways, just to have it there. I mean, I'm sure you're going to do it. I know you're going to do it, but it's just to make sure we're all set. Since we are dealing with the parking, we want to kind of make sure we button that up. But again, this is just an outstanding project, great presentation. To show like, great plans you put forth, and it's going to be, I think it's going to be wonderful for the city. And I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I do agree with my colleagues, John and Nora. We appreciate your time and effort in lining out and assembling all this information for the public hearing and explaining in detail what's going on at the site, the increase in housing, as mentioned by our colleagues, and particularly continued access to Housing Authority living space within the city. The green, the green space along the V F W highway is a be a welcome site. It's been a, it's been a process down that way. And I think when all is said and done to what you're doing, I'm hopeful the State Highway Department will will be involved in activities along the opposite side and the properties above your fence line. And I'm very confident the property manager on that site will maintain this. I know, I'm sure that the executive director and the management teams within the housing are excited about this project to bowl well for the residents and the citizens. And the condition for the signage is the only thing we're looking at. For that drop-off area, I did see, Nora, thank you for expanding that. We saw you did have it. It's going to be painted in the drop-off. But a couple of signs on the other end, John, I don't think will enhance the area. So that being said, Mr. Clerk, I believe we'll have two separate votes.
Yes. Member McCarthy is back if you want to give him, have him retrieve his time that it was so abruptly interrupted.
By all means, Mr. McCarthy, feel free to continue where you left off. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Perrin. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing anything with that curb cut dimension. Is there anything we need to worry about there? Did Jessica or Dylan retrieve?
I just reviewed the zoning, and the maximum curb cut in the T M F district is twenty-five feet. So they would need a variance for that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for doing that. Okay. I apologize for leaving abruptly there. I have no idea why. Thank you.
I'm just glad to have you back. So Dennis, would you be comfortable encompassing that as a condition?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very well. So that being said, we have two separate conditions, and we'll have two separate votes. Petitioners are in agreeance with both those on the curb cut and the signage. Mr. Clerk, if you could move forward with the motion.
Would the curb cut be a condition or would it just be an additional variance that we're just going to be granting as under the all-encompassing, you know, any other relief?
Yep, I stand corrected. You are correct. It will follow it under other relief prescribed. So it'll be, I guess it'll be a subsection of the original variance?
Yeah, it'll be an additional variance. I mean, that's under, the curb cuts had a five-point-one, correct, Jess?
It is six-point-one point ten.
Six-point-one point ten, okay. I'll note that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
So we only have the one condition for the signage for the drop, for the drop-off area.
That's correct. Yeah.
So, well, if there's not, if there's not no other than three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for, do two votes. We'll start with a special permit. Z B twenty-twenty-one dash eight for five-seventy-two dash six-ten Lakeview Ave for a special permit approval under section four-point-five to extend existing non-conforming use of the property.
May I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. McCarthy. Have a roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin? Vice Chairman Beck?
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere?
Recusal.
Member Proco?
Approve with conditions.
Member Neurohick?
Approve with conditions.
Chairman, we've been approved with conditions. Mr. Clerk, we have the second motion, please.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion again on Z B twenty-twenty-one dash eight for five-seventy-two six-ten Lakeview Avenue for variance approval under section six-point-one for off-street parking and under six-point-one point ten for maximum curb cut to extend the existing non-conforming off-street parking spaces with the previously mentioned condition.
Thank you. May I have a second?
George Broko, second.
Second by Mr. George Broko. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve a condition.
Vice Chairman Beck?
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere?
Recusal.
Member Proco?
Approve with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Well, John and Nora, you have been unanimously approved for a special permit and a variance. We appreciate all your hard work and dedication and commitment to the project and within the city of Lowell and your preparedness tonight. And we wish you the best of luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to the board and the professional staff of the city. Very much appreciated. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. You too. Take care.
Night.
Bye-bye. We're going to move forward into other business. We have a minor modification at two oh seven Wentworth Avenue. The applicant is seeking a minor modification for a previously approved variance to construct in addition to a single-family home. The applicant is seeking to change the style of the home due to rot that was found in the gambrel. The proposed exterior resemble a colonial-style home. Is there a representative or the petitioner here this evening?
We're here.
Good evening. Want to tell us a little about your project? And do you have any other representatives tonight?
Yes, we have Michael Batson here with us, with our contractor.
Okay. Can you just give us a brief understanding of what took place on this property, looking, seeking this minor modification?
Sure. What had happened, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll let you know. So what had happened was we opened up that exterior wall.
Sir, if you could just state your name and address for the record and the title?
Yes, my name is Michael Batson with Cornerstone Construction and Remodeling. I'm their general contractor doing the work on that property.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
So what we had noticed was we opened up, we're doing extensive work on that house. We're putting an addition on the back. And what we had found was that the roof rafter tails were not connected to the outside rim. On the front of the house, it was approximately four and a half feet of rotted header from the corner of the house over. So with the extension of the rafter tails, which isn't a code, there was very little holding that corner of the wall. So due to the code of one oh five point two point one, under the emergency repairs, I instructed my guys to remove that corner of the house. And as we were removing that corner, it was getting sway. So we ended up removing further. And before we got to start building, order lumber for it or apply to adjust our permit, it was noticed. And that's where we are here today. So what we're looking to do is change the style of the housing as we found this much damage. And we've already replaced eighty percent of the whole second floor. We're going to try to bring this house into a better look with a colonial style rather than gambrel.
Okay. That's all you have for now, sir?
That is.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by the petitioners at this point? None being heard. I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, to me, it sounds like a structure or a safety issue as they were, you know, doing the rental or the updates to the property. To me, Mr. Chairman, just my own opinion, you know, I think this modification is acceptable. So I have no objections. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. This certainly meets the met, I think certainly meets the definition of a minor modification. We're looking at an F A R. The approval was previously for an F A R of point five oh. And the difference from what has been told to us of what the changes that are coming is a difference of five-point, point, zero-point-five-one, which to me is, seems very minor. And especially looking at the, looking at the way it's broken down and how, of course, once you get into these things, when you find out what happens, this is why we're here for these things. And I thank the applicant for coming forward to get this straightened out with the building department. I think the building department said, well, with the zoning, we're dealing with it or we can deal with it. If they think we can handle it, but it's just good to know that you're going by, going the right way to come before us to ask about this because certainly meets the definition of minor modification that should be reviewed beforehand. I'm in approval of it, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Robert?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, to echo what Member Callahan said, the F A R difference is really small. And it seems this was unforeseen. So I have no issue granting relief to the petition, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have no issues as well. I think that that modification is pretty small. And to Sean's point, you never know what happens until you get in there. So, you know, I just remember seven children, right? Is that what I remember? So good luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George. Mark?
Mark, you're speaking, Mr. Chairman. Minor modification for sure. No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I feel so sorry that this happened to you guys. By the way, the documentation this time, I remember when you first came before us, the documentation was a little bit sketchy. This is like crystal clear. You can see every detail. It's only gotten better. I mean, it's so easy to understand. And you know what, in the realm, you're going to get a better house out of this. So I'm sorry this has happened, but it's really, I think, got a silver lining that your house is going to be better-looking, better-built, and slightly bigger. So I hope you can live with the delay. But I see this completely as minor modification where it doesn't affect the footprint and the number so insignificant. I'm sorry, but I think it'll be better. So good luck.
Thanks. Thank you, Dennis. I have a few comments and a few questions. First and foremost, I do agree that the minor modification for this site is an appropriate one. But I do have a couple of questions for the general contractor. Upon notice of the rot, was the, was D P D or the building department notified? Upon notice of the rot, was the, was DPD or the building department notified of of the actual physical move forward prior to you being notified you needed a minor modification? How did this come about?
I'm sorry.
I understand. No, I'm just saying, I understand that you come upon it was rot. And you move forward in good faith. But I just want to, I just want some clarification, why the building was changed prior to the notice by the city?
So
And why that was that that should have been, that should have been, the owner should have been on, on the contractor to bring that to the city's attention.
Yeah, unfortunately, the blame falls on me. I had been there, I witnessed.
Sir, before you make a comment, I'm not looking for blame. I'm just, I'm not looking for blame. I'm just, I'm just trying to get some answers that, some questions that I'm being asked of quite frequently as an abutter because of the abrupt. I just want to be able to, for the public record, just give me just a timeline or, you know, on Monday you found it, on Thursday, DPD and building department, so that the public who's asking these questions of me and my role that are watching can hear from you. Again, we're looking for reconciliation to move forward. That's, I just want to kind of squash a few things that are taking place here in the neighborhood.
I don't have it documented on exactly what day it was that we found that rot. I was there with, I was there to lead, lead the guys. We looked at everything, came to the determination that even putting, putting the, some shoring up on the roof rafters wasn't going to solve the problem of the outside wall swaying along with the roof rafters. So it was going to be beyond repair along with heavy rains that were coming in. We thought that we'd be able to get it ripped off and maybe get some plywood back up on the wall, on the ceilings before, before the weather. I believe that we have 48 hours to make the change in the permit for a full it was noted before 48 hours. We didn't even start rebuilding. We still haven't. It's a wide-open project right now. As soon as we were told to stop, we did. So again, that kind of falls on me, but I believe that we have 48 hours to change the permits, the scope of the permits.
You're correct. And I just, I just want to have that on the record that, that, you know, there were many working facets to this change and the length and lost time is more of a detriment on, on the family themselves. To that point where you're making notice that the the site is open, were there any concerns about closing the building or topping it? To me, it just seems it's an attractive nuisance. The building's wide open. I mean, just from my, from my perspective, both personally and professionally with the weather coming in, are there any concerns of any structural damage of wood cupping or walls or seepage with the weather we've had, particularly the snow?
No, we haven't.
And you're going to be able to move, are you comfortable moving forward structurally? You're the professional here. Just, just for, just a point of clarification and understanding, not only for myself, but for people viewing.
Yes, yeah, I'm more than, more than comfortable with the situation where it's at right now, that it's going to be structurally sound. I mean, there's many buildings that are built in monsoons. We do a lot of additions and we can't prevent the weather. We did try to top this property, but it turned into a kite. And we weren't going to give that a second go because it kind of got dangerous because we were trying to do it in the, in the rain. We're trying to reset it in the rain after it already blew off. So at that point, you know, we're going to deal with, with the weather. We have been luckily, we have been lucky that we haven't had too much rain. And we haven't had any snow, but the minute that we have the green light, we're right back over there to wrap that up and keep plugging along.
Okay, good. That's very, I appreciate your candor and, you know, just having that set forth in the public record, primarily for the neighbors. You know, and full disclosure, I'm three houses down. I've had a lot of traffic. I thought it was Girl Scout cookie time, but there was just some concerns of the safety on the site and what was, how things were moving forward and how we're, how we're going to, you know, where this project was going to end, you know, as, and I'm sure you can appreciate, you guys were going, you guys were going full bore there. The addition in the back of that lot, you've done an incredible job. Sometimes it's very difficult for neighbors to have a true understanding what's going on. And in my particular position, frankly, I just, I wasn't providing the answers to some of the citizens because, one, I wasn't able to because I'm not able to disclose that violation of open meeting law. And I appreciate your efforts coming tonight. I, I do want the record known that I did ask the general contractor to come tonight. And I, sir, I appreciate you taking the time late in this evening to come here. I think that's very valuable. Not only for me, but for a lot of the neighbors who have concerns. And I think the biggest thing is that correct, it is a minor modification. The FAR is small and more importantly, I'll hear hammers in the morning over the next couple of days, once everything's signed off and we can move this project forward. And we look forward to buttoning that up and getting this family back in the neighborhood. So lemonade. And, yeah, I do appreciate your, your continued efforts there. And I hopefully the weather's on your side moving forward. And we can, we can get this moment. So the minor modification, thank you very much, sir. The minor modification is is minor relief from the FAR and a minor modification on changing the character from the Gambrel to a colonial style with no other conditions to my knowledge. Any other comments or concerns by the board? None being heard.
It's George. I just wanted to be sure. Was it you that I saw jogging when I was looking at the house at 207 Wentworth?
If that's what my wife wants to hear, George, I appreciate your partnership.
It wasn't him, George, it was me.
You know, we're, we're, we're very appreciative that we're able to move this forward. It's just, you know, more, moreover, it's the displacement of, you know, the family, your workers and just return and enable it. And by the way, I don't think George Clooney made any negative comments. I look forward to seeing this property finalized and becoming a beautiful part of our neighborhood. With all that being said, I appreciate everyone's time. And Mr. Clerk, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for acceptance of minor modification and approval for 207 Wentworth Avenue.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve minor modification.
Vice Chairman Beck?
Approve minor modification.
Member Callahan?
Accept and approve minor modification.
Member McCarthy?
Approve minor modification.
Member Briere?
Approve.
Member, member Proco?
Approve minor modification.
Member Narohay?
Approve minor modification.
Well, sir, we've been approved for your minor modification. I look forward to hearing hammers and saws in the neighborhood moving this project for further closure. And best of luck to the petitioners to get your beautiful family back to the neighborhood.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
You too.
Take care. Moving forward on the other business, we have minutes for approval for March 22, 2021. Anyone have any comments, revisions, edits, or concerns? None being heard. May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from March 22, 2021.
May I have a second?
I second.
I second the motion, Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Vice Chairman. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
I accept the minutes for March 22, 2021.
Vice Chairman Beck?
Accept the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Accept minutes for March 22, 2021.
Member McCarthy?
Accept the meeting minutes for March 22.
Member Briere?
Acceptance.
Member Proco?
Accept the meeting minutes for March 22, 2021.
Member Narohay?
Meeting minutes March 22.
Thank you. The meeting minutes have been accepted for public record. Any other comments, concerns, or statements by the members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, can I take a quick comment real quick?
Mr. Vice Chair, please.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just through you, I just wanted to acknowledge and recognize you know, my colleagues and the Department of Plan Development. At the last meeting, we had very spirited discussions and passionate kind of comments and debates back and forth. People were very fashion appropriate, so I just wanted to highlight that and show that I really respect that and it's really appreciated. So I just want to say that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any other comments? Any of your board members?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I know that there were some comments, I think it was either Dylan or Francesca, that thought that because we're doing these that we need to outline the public and how they can participate and when they cannot participate. So going forward, I'd just like to see us make a statement at the beginning of the meeting public and how they will participate in that one time when we suggest the public or state that the public can. So this way, and we avoid the confusion.
Well, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I think perhaps between the board and DPD, we can come up with a small narrative that can be disertained by whomever's chairing the meeting. So let's set some parameters.
Perfect.
Any other comments or concerns from the board?
I think Fran might have an announcement. Chairman? Leave it to her.
I believe so. Fran?
So we do have a new staff member here, Peter Catrumbas. He is a new assistant planner with staff. So he's been on board for a couple of weeks now, I think maybe three weeks, and we're really excited to have him.
Hey, guys, really happy to be here.
Welcome.
Well, welcome. I'll go up board, Peter.
Thanks, guys.
Wish you the best of luck in the city.
I'll go up board. I honestly can't remember since I've been here, we haven't had more than three people as far as I remember. Working, oh yeah, four outstanding people that are working. This is, this is great. It's great for the city that we're expanding. There's a lot of work to be done. Welcome, Peter. Yeah, looking forward, everybody's looking forward to work with all of you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Best of luck. Any other comments or concerns? None being heard. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion second by Mr. McCarthy. The meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Stay safe and stay healthy.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.